Massachusetts Wetlands. In accordance with the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, MGL Chapter 131, Section 40, and the Boston Wetlands Ordinance, Boston City Code Ordinances, Chapter 714, the Boston Conservation Commission will hold a virtual public hearing at 6:00 PM on July 24th, 2024 to review the following projects to determine what conditions, if any, the commission will impose in order to protect the interests of public and private water supply, groundwater, prevention of pollution, flood control, prevention of storm damage, protection of fisheries and land-containing shellfish, and protection of wildlife habitat. Today, the commission will be holding a public hearing followed by our regular meeting. In accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, we're conducting the meeting online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the Conservation Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Additionally, the meeting is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video. Members of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at cc@boston.gov. For the record, I am standing in as Chair of the Commission today. Will the rest of the commissioners and staff please identify themselves?
Elena Itamarri with the Environment Department.
DeeDee Hernandez with the Environment Department.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Mike Wilson.
Commissioner Conan?
Conan Durvinger.
Commissioner Linay?
Sorry, it was a mute. Amy Linay.
Welcome. Commissioner Richmond?
Alice Richmond.
Okay, thank you. So the first item on our agenda is a notice of intent for DEP File Number 0061994 from Fort Point Associates, Inc., on behalf of the Boston Harbor Shipyard and Marina for the proposed repairs and maintenance plan of the parking areas and docks located at 256 Marginal Street, East Boston, Mass. Resource areas include land under ocean, fish run, designated port area, land subject to coastal storm flowage, and 100-foot buffer to coastal bank. Who's here for the applicant?
Hi Chair Herbst, it's me, Eric Frazier.
Welcome. Go right ahead.
Thank you. So tonight with me is Angela Gassi and Marshall Greenland from the shipyard, and also Pam Carnavale and Chris Bush from Massport. Next slide, please. So just as an overview, this project will be taking place at 256 Marginal Street in East Boston, which is the Boston Harbor Shipyard Marina. We filed a notice of intent for the maintenance and repairs of all of the things we have going on at the shipyard, which includes repairing the concrete decking, maintaining and moderating our sinkholes, and conducting limited pile removal and replacement, as well as resurfacing, or rather, fixing low spots at our gravel lots. Next slide, please. So here is an image of the existing wetland resources at the project site. As Chair Herbst mentioned, we have coastal bank, coastal beach, land under ocean, land under ocean and DPA, a fish run, land subject to coastal storm flowage, and the coastal bank buffer zone. Next slide, please. So the existing conditions at the site, as you can see, we're just looking to maintain the yard on the left image. It's an example of some of the sinkholes that we see. And then the top image is just some of the concrete deck repairs that we're trying to make. The top right image is an example of the gravel lot. Typically, when we have uneven surfaces, the travel lift isn't able to operate. So what we'll do is resurface the lot to make sure that it's a level grade. And then the bottom two images are the two parking areas that we were looking to repair and will be having a further discussion on that, I think, at the end of the hearing, because I believe we'll be looking to omit this part of the NOI. So we can move to the next slide. So just as an example of some of the in-water work that we have, we have a pile field that we're looking to remove. It's approximately 30 piles, so these will be removed fully. And then the two images that you see in the middle are a few of the docks that need to be repaired. So what we'll do is remove the piles that are currently holding them in place and remove the pier and slide in a replacement and re-drive those piles. Next slide, please. So just as an overview for where everything's occurring in wetland resources, the majority of it is in land subject to coastal storm flowage and the coastal bank buffer zone on the land side. So the two gravel lots you'll see on the left and right-hand sides of the screen are where we'll do some just fixing low spots and re-establishing the gravel. And then the pink areas are the concrete deck repairs that we will be conducting. And then the red area is where we see our typical sinkhole occurring. So that's the area in which we would be conducting sinkhole repairs. Next slide, please. And then just for the in-water work, the majority is in land, sorry, land under ocean and a fish run. So this would include the yellow area at the top hand, right-hand corner. That's where that 30 pile field is. And then the remaining site, we're estimating at 10 piles per year of removing and replacing. Next slide, please. So just as an overview for what the areas would look like and how much of an impact we would have on the wetland resource areas. It's about 1,000 square feet a year in monitoring our sinkholes. And again, we're going to be omitting the next the photo on the right for resurfacing paved areas. Next slide, please. We're going to be conducting concrete repairs on all of our piers, removing piles, which is about 120 square feet, including the 30 that we're removing and including the 10 per year over a three-year time period of order of conditions. And then resurfacing gravel lots is approximately 500 square feet a year. Next slide, please. For our mitigation measures, we'll be putting sedimentation and erosion controls around any soil stockpiles in between any deck repairs and sinkhole repairs in the Boston Harbor. We'll make sure that catch basin inlets are protected with geotextile fabric. And for our in-water work, we'll be using a vibratory hammer to both extract and drive the piles and also making sure that there is a silt curtain to contain any turbidity levels during that pile driving, although it's likely to be minimal. Next slide, please.
Okay.
I mean, questions and discussion?
Okay. Well, I think for the rest of the commission, in your reference to excluding paving, your NOI received comment from DEP, most of which was resolved, but what was made clear was that paving projects will require an NOI because they'll require a stormwater filing.
Yes, so any major undertaking for repaving. So basically, if we want to fill in potholes and make repairs to the parking lot, that's fine. But if DeeDee, you can go back to that image of the parking area. Yeah, on the left, oh, sorry, on the right there. You know, that's the larger Marina lot that DEP was concerned about for not having a stormwater management report on, which is understandable. So we'll be filing a separate NOI when we're prepared to to repave this lot, so we would be resurfacing fully and repaving fully. So that was their concern, was this larger lot.
Okay. I think, at least from my perspective, they talked about the full-depth removals. And so you had also proposed a 1,500-square-foot lot, and I would consider, from my perspective, I would also exclude that. That would require an NOI, should require an NOI. So I'm, I mean, the commission needs to have a chance to weigh in on this, but I think, I am thinking that there are several special conditions, some which I think are sort of typical because you're wanting to do some work as needed, which is 48 hours' notice to the commission of type and extent of work. You also referenced in your filing that you would seek administrative approval for anything else, any kind of similar projects that hadn't been noted. I think we should have an NOI that this does not authorize paving projects, understanding you may undertake some repairs. But I think we may also need to figure out some, whether it's a square footage or administrative, you know, contacting the commission to see if you need an NOI for paving. We need to do something with that because I think it should cover both lots. Because your proposal was to replace both.
Yes.
Does that make sense to you?
That makes sense to me. Yeah. So any repaving and resurfacing of the major lots would require that NOI, and we'd likely just do it in one NOI with a stormwater report. But like I said, any areas that need repairs are okay.
Yes. So I think the question is, how do we distinguish that? And I don't know if you have thoughts on that, or we should have thoughts on that, but.
Well, I think right now what we had estimated was about 500 square feet a year in those just regular repairs. So.
Sorry.
I'm just going to suggest that, you know, we discussed that already, and I think that would make sense.
So maybe the special condition that says it doesn't authorize any paving beyond the 500, up to 500 square feet a year noted would do the trick. Elena, do you have anything to add before?
I don't have anything to add. I just, so to clarify additional conditions, so this would cover up to 1,000 total square feet of patching in the, not in the main Marina parking lot, but in the parking lot directly next to the office building. We would request 48 hours' notice to commission staff for any work that is done under this permit. And then administrative approval for similar projects not included in the NOI. And I think that if it would be, if the commission were comfortable with it, we'd maybe recommend including a condition that just specifies that the patching work within that 1,000 square feet is subject to commission staff approval. So that should just be sent to us with details on where it's happening and how large of an area it is. And we can kind of keep track of the size of the patches and make sure that it stays under that 1,000 feet.
Okay, but I think we were just talking 500 square feet.
Excuse me, 500 square feet. That, I will update that. So 500 square feet total.
And I just want to state that, you know, where we have like sinkholes and stuff, that's a larger area that is covered. So.
Separately. Okay. All right. Before I go on to Commissioner comments, just as a reminder to the public to provide public comment, please raise your virtual hand or type in the chat via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in by phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself or send your comments to staff via email at cc@boston.gov. Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, I guess a quick question in terms of like the material that's going out of the sinkhole. It sounded like some of it's like timber cribbing or sort of like organically is decomposing. I was just wondering if there was any stuff that was, that you know of that's going out into the harbor or, you know, sort of volumetrically how much you're having to fill as well on this. Yeah, area is important, but how deep and how, you know, if you're bringing in like chuckle of the gravel.
Yes, I'm actually going to let, I'm going to let Marshall answer that question.
Yeah. So the, I think the main areas are typically in, where we have sinkholes are in the relieving platform areas and which have a wood deck underneath. So a lot of times if that deteriorates, we'll start to lose fill from where that deck deteriorates. If, if we're able to address it quickly, like once we start to see the depression, I don't want to give you like a volumetric number exactly because I don't know it, but if you have a, say, our average size is a couple, a couple feet square, we might lose six inches of depth. So that's, you know, when we notice it, that fill going out. So for us, ideally, it's to, and hopefully, you know, this will help us be able to address it quickly so that we don't, you know, start to lose all that, all that fill out of the yard.
And this is, I guess the sinkholes are separate from the prior work that we were seeing. It was sort of between the one platform and the decking that had eroded. This is sort of, whereas that was sort of an engineered type of solution, this is more of a, you know, a contractor level type of.
Yeah, and I think, you know, we, and we've, we've tried to, you know, address during, during the site visits and everything. This is maintenance to keep everything operational. So yeah, mostly it's small stuff, not like the emergency repair that we had to do a couple months ago. And then I stress the maintenance part because we are also, you know, we have a big improvement plan here to actually, you know, have like a big engineered repair in these areas that, you know, will of course come back with that when it's, when it's designed and that to actually address the larger problem and make, you know, real long-term resiliency lasting repairs.
All right. And that all makes sense. Thank you for the explanation. And the graphics were super clear. I did appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Conan?
Thank you. Just a clarification on what the scope of the NOI is. The site, the total square footage is 30,000 or more. And at 500 square foot per year, are we just talking about the first 500 or just doing the entire 30,000 at this rate?
So no, we are not going to be doing the repaving of the main area as part of this notice of intent. We'll submit a separate notice of intent for the repaving of the larger Marina lot.
At a different time?
At a different time, yes.
Okay, I guess that's what you were saying earlier. Thank you for clarifying. That's all I had. And I agree with you, Chair Herbst, that if NOI is needed, needed.
Okay. Commissioner Linay?
Just one question. So on the details for the filter sock, it's shown as staked, and I think in a lot of cases it'll be in paving. So can you just clarify how that will be secured in those locations?
Yeah, so in the paved areas, it will not be staked. Actually, Nate Chill is on, and he can speak more to how those will be secured.
Good evening, everybody. Nate Chill with Tetra Tech. On areas of pavement, the filter sock will be secured with cinder blocks. I think we submitted a revised detail sheet after the initial submission, which provides a detail for on pavement.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
Yeah, I think all of my questions have been answered. Thank you very much.
Okay. If, at this point, I think we could entertain a motion to issue an order of conditions.
Chair Herbst?
Certainly.
Sorry, apologies. Just wanted to make sure that we open the floor for public comment as well.
I'm sorry. Did you get any comments?
No. Well, I mean, yeah, so I'm at least not seeing any raised hands, though I'm not sure if anybody from the public wanted to raise their hand at this point.
Okay, I did, I did give them a chance ahead of it. I think, I think they'd had time, if anybody's interested. So at this point, I think if somebody wants to propose issuing an order of conditions with the special conditions that the applicant will provide 48 hours' notice of work, including the type of work and extent that the applicant will seek administrative authorization for additional similar projects that weren't specifically described here. And clarification that the, this order of conditions does not authorize any paving beyond the repairs requested in this project.
So moved?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second. Can I ask a clarification question, Chair Herbst?
Sure.
When you say similar projects, what qualifies as similar?
The types of projects that they, sinkholes, potholes, concrete breaking up, is essentially what they've proposed, but if something happens in a location not identified, at least that's my understanding. Is that correct from the proposal?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Did we have a second? I'm not sure.
We did have a second.
Okay, perfect. Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Conan?
Aye.
Commissioner Linay?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that passes five to zero. Thank you. And I think we're going to move right on to. Okay, so our next item is a notice of intent 0061998 from Fort Point Associates on behalf of Boston Harbor Shipyard and Marina for the proposed demolition of Building 17 located at 256 Marginal Street, East Boston. Resource areas are land subject to coastal storm flowage and 100-foot buffer to the coastal bank. So go right ahead.
Me again. So here is just the first image of Building 17, which is located in, or on the west, no, east side of the shipyard. Next slide, please. Thank you. So just as a zoom out and a zoom in, Building 17 is approximately a 5,000-square-foot footprint. It's two stories and made of brick. So as I said, it's on the western side of the shipyard. Next slide, please. Here is just an overview of the few wetland resource areas that Chair Herbst mentioned. Land subject to coastal storm flowage includes both the Zone AE and Zone VE. And then we also have the 100-foot coastal bank buffer zone, which you can see in the orange outline. Next slide, please. So just for existing conditions, as I mentioned, it's a 5,000-square-foot area. It's two stories made of brick, and it is adjacent to our graving dock. Next slide, please. This is an image taken from that gravel lot located on the east side of the shipyard as well. Just showing the other sides and then also the view from Marginal Street. Next slide, please. So the proposed work within wetland resource areas includes the removal of the building fully. We will be increasing the pervious surface at the site by going down to the pile cap and replacing it with gravel rather than concrete or asphalt paving. The demolition is planned to occur in fall 2024, and will take approximately three weeks. And then all of the building debris is to be trucked out for either recycling or to an approved disposal site. Next slide, please. So in terms of our mitigation measures, all of the demo will be taken from the side of the building, so not the side where the graving dock is located, to the maximum extent practicable. We'll have sedimentation controls, including a filter sock and a raised gravel berm basically around the entire perimeter of Building 17 and between the building and Boston Harbor, and then also around any debris and stockpiles. The catch basin inlets will be protected with geotextile fabric, and that will allow for sediment trapping. And then as needed, we will be suppressing any dust with water. And then off-site sediment tracking will be monitored, and at the end of each workday, the work area will be swept. Next slide, please. And that was my quicker presentation.
Short and sweet. Elena, do you have anything for us on this project?
We don't have anything on this project. We just wanted to clarify one question, which was just how the site is going to be secured during the demolition.
I'm sure. And I'll let Marshall to speak to that.
Yeah. As far as, so the whole demo area will be gated off by the contractors and then a portion of that is already gated, but we'll gate the whole area. And we have 24-hour security in the site, so it'll be monitored 24 hours even when work's not being done.
Perfect. Thank you.
And before I go to the commissioners, just as a reminder to members of the public to provide public comment, please raise your virtual hand or type in the chat via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in by phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself or send your questions to staff via email at cc@boston.gov. Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, I don't believe I have any further questions. Yeah, NOI locked up on me, so I'm going off of memory here. Thank you.
Commissioner Conan?
Thank you, Chair Herbst. Given all the sinkholes and everything, and it makes me a little bit nervous, demolition of such a large building. I heard the mitigation measures around the building, both on the dock side and on the other side. What about the building itself and the floor? And how secure is that? Could that break? Can you talk about that?
So, I mean, as far as the ground conditions in relation to what we were talking about in the previous NOI, this area, this lot on the site is not an area where we have ground condition issues. The lot that, so as Erica mentioned, the demo will take place on the east side of the building, so the, in the gravel lot. That was, that lot was the site of a large building that was demolished in 2012. So it's, it's, you know, recently, within the last 10 or 12 years, been, you know, worked on. Everything's regraded, so it's good ground conditions. As far as the, the building itself, so the, the building's built, it's a slab. It's a slab on grade, so we, there's no known voids or anything under the, under the existing slab of the building, but none of the equipment will be, you know, going into that area. So they'll be, they'll be doing it from, from the side of the building, so they won't be operating on that, on that slab that they're demoing.
Let's see. Thank you. How old is this building, Marshall?
So the original north portion was, was built in 1926, and then there's a southern addition that was built in 1946, 45 or 46. in nineteen forty-six, forty-five or forty-six, uh, nineteen forty-three, sorry. The southern addition was nineteen forty-three.
So the, the earliest is nineteen twenty-six, you said? So almost a hundred years?
Correct.
Okay. And you'll be monitoring the ground conditions just in case there is any uncertainties there, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, we'll be monitoring it, and the, the contractor that, that will be doing the demo is, um, very familiar with the, the, the conditions on the site, so they're, they're a long-term contractor, so, um, yeah, we're comfortable working with them on that, monitoring it.
Thank you. That's all, Chair Herbst.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Linay?
Uh, one question on the, the demo plan, if we could go back to that. In this, um, oh, yeah. That's great. Um, so if the, is the access to the dock over that gravel berm, are those cars moving within, inside of the construction fence? And, and if so, um, how, will you ensure that they're not tracking sediment off-site as well?
So the, the gravel berm is to allow, um, the shipyard to continue to operate from then to that, that concrete pier over there. Um, and it's, like we said, um, we're gonna monitor any sediment tracking, but because we're not necessarily proposing to do much of the demolition from that side, I don't expect that there'd be a ton of debris following those, um, those trucks that are accessing, because it's, they wouldn't be construction vehicles. They'd be more so the marina's daily operators.
Okay, and they, but they are moving that construction fence is aligned with that red line on the west side?
So the, um, the red line that is represented on, um, on the plan is the, the extent of the project site, and then the brownish-red line is the location of the coastal bank, and the sedimentation barrier isn't very well seen on here, but it's right adjacent to the, um, the bank, basically, because that's where, uh, the, between the gravel dock and the building.
Six thirty-seven, they're not here.
Great, thank you.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Richmond?
Uh, yeah, I just want to make sure, um, that, um, uh, the demolition of the building, a- are there things like asbestos in this building?
So yes, the, the remediation of the building will occur prior to demolition.
Um, I'm not sure when you say the remediation, so in other words, the asbestos will be removed before the building is demolished?
Correct, so, um, we actually also have on the call, um, Matt Madden, who can speak more to that, um, but basically the remediation is on the interior of the building, and they will go through a full abatement process. Um, I do think that there are a couple of external pieces of the building that are, um, that have asbestos, but that again will be fully removed and abated prior to the demolition of the building itself.
So, um, I'm sorry. Go ahead, please.
Uh, sure. This is Matt Madden at Tetra Tech. I was just gonna add to what Erica said there. We did an inspection of the building, uh, for asbestos and other hazardous materials. Uh, there are a few asbestos-containing materials. There's some wood floor underlayment on the interior. There's some window glazing. There's also some roof lashing. All those materials will be removed by an abatement contractor prior to the demolition.
And I, I, I'm assuming they're gonna be removed and removed entirely from the site, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. They'll be removed and bagged and disposed of off-site at an asbestos landfill.
Okay, um, and when is that gonna occur?
So that, that will occur, um, before the general demolition. Um, and I don't know, Marshall, I don't know if we have a schedule for that, but it's, um, at least, at least, you know, two weeks prior to the demolition.
Okay, so I'm looking at something which says that demolition is expected in fall two oh two four for approximately three weeks. So that's just the demolition of the exterior, so this will occur before the three weeks, so that, in other words, the three weeks is just for the exterior and the interior will be before that?
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay, and do we know, is, is that, when is that gonna start?
Uh, a- as far as scheduling, um, once we, once we go through this process, uh, we'll be, a- and, and so get, have a timeline for demolition. The, so that's what we're waiting on to schedule the remediation, so, um, we will, we're ready, uh, to, with the contractor and everything else to do the remediation. Um, so again, pending this decision and, and order of conditions, uh, we'll then move forward to start remediation so that we can move into the demolition.
Okay, I mean, I, I think you're getting, um, from the, the questions that, um, there's just concern about the age of this building, and, you know, um, what surprises you might find as you, you know, try to, to, to take it out. So, um, I, I just, um, you know, I'm, I'm just expressing the same concern in a slightly different way that you've already heard, uh, and, and, um, I presume that will be in our order of conditions that, um, all of the, i- if there are things that you find that you don't expect, that somehow you will let us know and assure us that none of it is getting anywhere near the buffer zones.
Yes, if there's any impact, if there would be any impact to the wetland resource areas, we would let, uh, staff know immediately.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, Elena, do we have comments from the public?
We had a number of comments in the chat, um, and I'm unsure whether folks wanted to raise their hand to read their comments, um, aloud or just keep them in the chat for now. Sorry to clarify, i- if anybody would like to read their, their comments aloud, um, and, and ask any questions.
Uh, I, I think, you know, given, um, the stuff that might be in the building, I would, um, I would really like those comments to be on the record.
We'll certainly include any comments that are in the chat in the minutes. They'll be a part of the record, but if, if folks have questions, uh, that they would like to ask, uh, either of the commission or of the proponent.
So, uh, give people a chance to do that. I think it's sometimes easier if people, I do speak for themselves. Um, I do think some of these questions are outside of our wetlands purview, but I'm wondering, um, whether the proponent has had or is planning to have conversations about, um, you know, how this may affect the neighborhoods. That might be something that would be helpful to.
Yeah, we've, um, we presented at a couple of JPNA meetings, um, and we plan to present again at the August JPNA meeting. Uh, Marshall, that's correct.
Yeah, the planning and zoning, yep.
Um, so we've had a pretty open dialogue, um, with the neighborhood about the demolition.
Okay, um, so one question, I, I guess I'll just try and zip through these if we can do. Will the, will this require closing the, uh, shipyard to the public for a period of time?
Uh, no, thi- this is, this is already, uh, uh, one of our restricted areas, so it's not, not public access. Um, you know, the on- the only thing that I, I would say is, i- if, you know, if there's a portion of the building, there is a portion of the building that's, um, close to, to Marginal Street, um, you know, I, I, there may be a day here and there where i- if, because of the activity going on, that we need to, you know, uh, restrict access in that area for a temporarily short period, but, but it's not, not planned to, to close access, public access, uh, for any planned period of time.
Okay, and I'll just do one that I think isn't, I can't probably speak for themselves, and it's from an iPhone. Um, the, it's, can it be confirmed work trucks will be accessing from the main shipyard entrance, uh, not from the airport side of Marginal Street? Is that something you can address?
Yeah, so that, that's our pla- that's our planned route, yes.
All right, and I, I know concerns about air pollution and asbestos, but I, uh, which you have addressed, and I know that that's sort of a pretty carefully regulated, uh, concern. All right, um, I think that may be it from, for addressing public comments, uh.
And, uh, I also wanted to note that we, we just received a letter in our inbox, um, which is, I believe, referenced in the chat as well.
It, um, this is regarding a, a historic issue?
The, uh, yes.
Okay, which, which is beyond our purview, but I now do see a hand raised, uh, Anne LaGasse. Would you like to speak?
Yes, I, um, yeah, we, we see the letter from the neighbors. We did su- do some research on the historic value of this property, of this Building Seventeen. Um, as you know, a very large immigration building on the same site was removed, and it was not a protected landmark, uh, nor is this building, uh, but we dug a little deeper, um, and we worked with Liz Nelson. Um, if you folks probably don't know who Liz Nelson is, but you know her work. She's the head of the Boston, Friends of the Boston Haberwalk and does all the historic signage around the, uh, the harbor. So she dug into this building and really couldn't find anything of historic value through three different reports she looked at, so, um, um, we continue and we will, um, provide, um, interpretive signage throughout the shipyard about the history of immigration in this building, I mean, in this shipyard, and also the history of Bethlehem Steel, but this particular building, she could not find any historic value to it, except that it's old, um, so.
Okay, thank you.
We did look into that.
All right. Uh, at this point, I would entertain a motion to issue an order of conditions with our, all of our standard, uh, requirements.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Wilson?
Hi.
Commissioner Conan?
Hi.
Commissioner Linay?
Hi.
Commissioner Richmond?
Hi.
And I vote I, so that passes, uh, five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Uh, so the next item on our agenda is a request for a determination of applicability from, uh, ACOM on behalf of the Department of Conservation and Recreation for the proposed installation of, of a subsurface electrical line to provide power to a pump within a catch basin, basin within Evans Field located at Farragut Road, South Boston. Who's here for the proponent?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's, uh, Tom Keo from AECOM. I'm here tonight on behalf of DCR, and I'm also joined by Tom Walton of DCR.
All right, ahead.
Um, so as you see before you, that's an aerial image of Evans Field. It's immediately adjacent to the Murphy Rink, and some commissioners may recall that we were, uh, before you, not too long ago, for a water line to be put into William J. Day Boulevard, um, extending out of the rink parking lot and heading down towards, uh, Castle Island. Uh, the project, uh, this evening is, there's, uh, for the installation of a replacement electric line that will tie into, uh, the Murphy Rink for a catch basin that's, uh, within the ball field. Um, if you want to go to the next slide, please? Yeah, it's a close work one there, so the, unlike the water line, uh, this project is located outside of the buffer zone of all resource areas, but it is within land subject to coastal storm flowage, and that's why we're here, uh, before you this evening. Uh, next slide, please. And here we go, the resource area map. You can see the dashed blue and white line is the extent of the buffer zone. Um, our project is landward of that. It is the orange line, um, that travels through the ball field and into the parking lot will tie in. It's gonna be a small, shallow trench, uh, for the electric line. We don't need to dig too deep, um, we don't need to, you know, achieve a certain pitch or get below the frost line or anything like that for the electric line, so it's gonna be a relatively shallow line. It will tie into the existing catch basin, um, where the pump has been replaced, um, and that will prevent the, the, the field from backing up. Since the electric service has gone down, uh, there tends to be standing water and ponding within the field, uh, during heavy rain events, and this will correct that problem. Now, a couple of photos, I believe, are on the next slide, if you want to go. So we just have the, the entrance to the parking lot. Right there, that's the one area that actually pitches towards the street. Um, erosion controls will be used throughout. They'll be anchored with heavier objects while they're in, um, in the parking lot on the asphalt, and the, they'll be staked when they're in the field itself. The electric line will be going landward of the trees, so not towards the street. Uh, no vegetation removal, except for the grass, of course, uh, will be required. We don't have to cut any trees. As I said, the trench will be relatively shallow, so we don't anticipate, uh, root damage or anything like that. With it being the electrical line too, you can always just meander it around, uh, objects. It does not need to run in a, you know, perfectly straight line. Um, when construction's over, we have to restore everything to match the exact rates here. Um, as you recall from the air photo, the trench is gonna run along the third baseline and left field line of the ball field, so we do not want, you know, any divots or any changes in elevation or anything like that, with, you know, somebody running to get a foul ball, um, and hits one, you know, hits a little rough spot in the field. So it will be restored to the exact elevations of the, the, you know, to match the exact elevations of the surrounding area, and, um, just reseeded with the, you know, a typical fescue and, uh, your vigrass. Yeah, there we, there we just have the, uh, the, the line of the electrical line with the, uh, the erosion controls. A little tough to read here on a screen. Um, that would be it, and I'd be happy to, uh, answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I, from my perspective, this is the kind of, uh, project that we often issue, uh, a negative determination of applicability with, with erosion control requirements. Um, I do want to note, though, that you had claimed two exemptions, and I don't believe either one applies. Um, you cited ten oh two, two V two, uh, which applies to projects in the buffer zone, but this is inland subject to coastal storm flowage, and you'd also indicated that you thought it would apply, uh, as a limited project, but, uh, this is an RDA, um, so that, it isn't relevant for this, so I, I don't think it means we, from my perspective, we can't issue a negative determination, but I think I do want to put on the record that I don't think either of those are applicable to this project.
Right, it's, it's, um, well, the coastal resource, uh, public utility, it's a coastal resource, land subject to coastal fo- and it's a utility for a state agency, therefore, you know, it's, it is public, so we could debate that one, but quite frankly, it's irrelevant. Um, all of it's irrelevant. We're digging a little ditch and some grass, um, you know, very far away from a resource area, and actually downgradient from it too, so we're very fortunate in the fact that even if it happens to rain while we're out there, um, you know, our sediment can't run uphill, so we're very fortunate in that, that respect.
Well, I, yes, we don't need to debate it, and, uh, they, they don't need to apply, so we will not be applying them, um, in this case. Uh, yeah, before I get to, uh, commissioners, as a reminder to the public to provide public comment, please raise your virtual hand or type in the chat via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in by phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself or send your questions to staff via email at cc@boston@boston.gov. Uh, Commissioner Wilson?
Sorry about that. In terms of the pump, where is sort of the discharge and I guess, what's its function? And, you know, how long has it been out of service, given the electric line had been abandoned or is no longer functional?
I can answer that. This is Tom from the DCR. So it the it discharges to a manhole. I guess that would be south of the of the pump chamber itself, and then that manhole discharges to a catch basin that that is on Day Boulevard.
Okay, so it's just like some sort of fighting gravity type of situation?
Yeah, exactly. The the whole ball feels in a bowl. And so, yeah, so the water, any of the any of the stormwater can't get out. And as far as how long it has been not working, a long time. It's been several years and, you know, I guess the Evans Field Group and the Day Boulevard, the South Boston, you know, friends group that that plays at this field, put up with it for a while, but the weather changed significantly in the last couple of years. And some major storms have really flooded the the field, like several feet of that couple of rainstorms with several feet of water. So so we had to go there and manually pump, you know, throw a, you know, a big pump into the into the pump chamber and get the water out of the field. And and DCR finally, you know, decided to make the investment to to put the pump back online.
Yeah, no, thank you. That that explanation makes total sense. And then just in terms of the trenching, it said like sort of two feet wide by two feet deep. Is that like a big, you know, whatever, is it an open cut or is it sort of more of a like the operating area of like, say, a ditch which are something smaller?
Most likely going to be an open cut.
Okay.
Yeah, the small bucket is the way we looked at it.
Yeah, we're I don't even think it'll be two feet. It'd probably be a one foot bucket.
Okay, just not a small backhoe type of thing.
Yeah, like a mini, like a small mini excavator of, you know, track excavator or sorts.
Okay.
Will do the as least damage as possible because whatever we damage, we have to restore, so.
All right. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Commissioner Condon?
Thank you, Chair Herbst. Given that this, the ball field is in a bowl and and we just heard how rain events have resulted in a lot of flood in the ball field. Has there ever been, I I realize, you know, what's next to the bay? A Day Boulevard is a bay, not the ocean itself. Has there ever been any ocean water coming over or coming under and upwelling?
No, not to my knowledge, anyway. The elevation of Day Boulevard is high enough to protect. I I'm not aware of any of any seaward water getting into the ball field. Or coming up from underneath either, like any type of groundwater, like the type of stuff, no.
Do you know if the the lowest point of the ball field is below high, high level?
I do not know that elevation, sir. I'm sorry. I know that we I know that we don't, we don't, we haven't had any issues in that, you know. To my knowledge, there has been no complaints of that type of of an issue.
I understand. I mean, given for any property that's so close to the water, we just have to bear in mind that anything that hasn't happened so far could potentially happen in the future and even in the near future, given how things are changing quickly.
Sure.
Did I hear that as part of the project, there will be some additional stormwater draining or mitigation be done?
No, no, we're just we're just reinstating the existing infrastructure.
And electric line, I I think I heard that it doesn't have been a straight line and it could meander. How will it be marked where the line is?
We will, we will, what do you mean by that, sir? How do you mean by, you mean?
How will you know? Yeah, after it's completed.
Oh, we're going to draw an haz built, I guess.
I see.
We keep shop shop records during every
Yeah. It's to the best of our not, you know, it's to, you know, we all, we all, we obviously want to know exactly where this line is for future, you know. This is an asset we're going to, we're going to be maintaining and keeping for, you know, for as long as we possibly can. So we want to we would, we would certainly want to know where the line is. We'll we'll draw our shop rec shop records and haz builds.
I see. That that makes sense. And how how shallow will it be? Or how deep will it be?
Anywhere between eighteen to two feet, eighteen inches to two feet.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Linay?
So I know you said there won't be any tree removals, but it does look like in the plan that it runs fairly close to some pretty large mature trees. So I would just, you know, recommend that care be given to that excavation in the critical root zone, just to avoid impacting the trees down the line.
Absolutely. One hundred, that's going to be the biggest concern when we when we do the excavation.
Great. Commissioner Richmond?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, no questions for me. Any questions from the public, Eleanor?
I am not seeing any raised hands and nothing in the inbox either. I was just going to recommend that perhaps in addition to our standard erosion conditions that the commission usually chooses to include in negative determinations, we could add our standard tree protection language for the work.
That that sounds appropriate. At this point, I'd I'd entertain a motion to issue a negative determination of applicability with the erosion control and tree protection conditions.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Again, with the note that you had identified Chair Herbst about how the exemptions don't apply.
Yeah. Um, thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Linay?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So that passes five to nothing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You bet. So our next item is a request for determination of applicability from JCBT Architect LLC on behalf of Jun Wong for the proposed installation of new stairs towards the rear of the building located at eighty-four Chelsea Street, East Boston, Mass. Who's here for the proponent?
Jim Chen, good evening. Good evening, Commissioners and board members. My name is Jim Chen from JCBT Architect. Representing my client, Jun Wong, who's the property owner. We got filed for an RDA for this subject property. Which is eighty-four Chelsea Street. It has a lot size of about a thousand five hundred twenty-two square feet. So we're in the process of applying for a building permit to renovate this existing building. On the lower ground, it lower level is a commercial space. And then on the upper three level are the three residential dwelling units. So what we're proposing is fairly simple. It is the exterior exterior stair toward the back of the property. To construct a new wood stair for the second means of the vest for the upper three residential units. This this would require digging grade four new concrete puddings that we use here for the support. This activity will be the minimalist on the effect on the site. And the means of method for construction this wood stair, it is a is a manual hand digging for the four concrete sonotube puddings. It would be dug down four feet below the grade to the frost frost line. And then with a diameter of thirty inch wide. And then we'll place a twenty-four inch diameter thick foot into the into the escalated hole. And then along with some number five rebar. And then we'll place a twelve inch diameter to the sonotube form. And then just pour concrete into it. So the concrete mix will be poured into the into the hole for the final placements. So in the rest of the steer with above that will be framed out of pressure treated materials. And our materials will be stored inside the house until until usage. And the majority of the rear site is actually currently paved with concrete paved area. But our plans to remove the concrete area and place it with previous grass surface. Except for the walkway area that leads out to the back alleyway, which will be sort of previous paper walkway. So this activity has, I believe, has a minimal impact on the site and and at the end, I think it will have more previous area.
Like, I know we left, like, the worst.
Excuse me?
Sorry, go ahead.
That was the end of my presentation.
Okay. Pardon me. Eleanor, do you have anything for us on this?
We don't have anything for this either. We were able to conduct a site visit and, yeah, don't have any further questions.
Okay. So before I go to Commissioners, as a reminder to the public to provide public comment, please raise your virtual hand or type in the chat via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in by phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself or send your questions to staff via email at cc at boston.gov. Commissioner Wilson?
I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Condon?
So this is before us because this is part, this is inland subject to coastal storm flowage, correct?
Correct.
So could I then just hear from the proponent a little bit more detail about how the basement will be used and protected? I know you said something, but I don't think I followed it all.
Yeah, so the basement is sort of a ground level than than the on Chelsea Street, but it is it is aligned with the same elevation as the rear rear yard. So that that uses stays the same as previously. It it used to be a dance studio, a commercial office slash dance studio. So it will remain as it is. That the owner would just want to renovate the space.
So nothing's changing?
Nothing's changing, no. The only thing we're requesting is still build a steer in the back for the second unit of this.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Linay?
I know you said that the puddings will be dug by hand, but can you just clarify? Is the access for construction happening through that passageway? Or through the building? And then can you also clarify if the egress out of the stair goes via that passageway as well?
So the construction material will be coming through inside the house and then down to the down to the ground level within the within the property. We won't be utilizing the upper gallery, which is only a thirty inch wide.
And is that the egress out of the out of the stair?
There's a stair. If I, if you could go back to the floor plan, I can show you the the typical layout. Okay, so here's the on the upper right corner of the plant, that's where the proposed separate meaning of the rest areas. So it will be coming off of a living room area and then out out to a stairway that leads to the back backyard, in the backyard.
So that's its only purpose is to get people into the backyard, not away from the building?
To the backyard and then from the backyard, there's there's an alley that goes to the public way.
Gotcha. Great, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Richmond?
Yeah, I'm I'm still a little confused here about the egress. Is there another way out besides the way that was just described?
Yes, if we go back to the floor plan, I can point it out in the first page. Go back to the first page. One more. So as you can see, that that's the proposed area is that location and then to with the back of the lot, there's a there's an area called Passageway. So that that area is is a public passageway that that will be exit out. And then that passageway is connected to a a side street that goes out to Chelsea Street.
Commissioner Richmond, anything further? You're on mute.
Yeah, I have a dog barking. So I apologized to everybody. I I think that everybody is of the same concern, you know, that that we want to make sure that there's with whatever changes you're making, that it doesn't affect the ability of people to get in and out. And i- is there, is this some something which also is possible for people who might be handicapped or disabled?
No, but on the lower level, it will it will be a handicap.
I'm sorry, I I don't understand. You're you're sort of breaking up to me. Could you just say that again, please?
On the lower level, commercial unit, it it could be accessible from the back alley into that unit. Handicapped. It could be a handicap accessible, but on the upper three units, there's no way to be handicapped accessible.
But but there you say the lower unit is handicapped accessible?
The the lower level on the back is actually level with the the backyard. So it could potentially be a handicap accessible. But on the upper three units, there's no way we can do it.
Do they do they have to be handicapped accessible?
No, they don't. It's a preexisting condition. We're not changing the use.
Okay. All right, thank you.
No further questions. My understanding is this is it's a very small project in terms of our purview and in adding sonotubes for for an additional egress. At this point, I would accept a motion to issue a negative determinant of applicability.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Linay?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So that passes five to nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is a request for an amendment to the original order of conditions for DEP BEP file number zero zero six sixteen forty-six from the Massachusetts Port Authority for the proposed expansion of covered activities to include damaged expansion joints located at Pierce Park, seventy-five Marginal Street, East Boston. Resource areas are land subject to coastal storm flow designated port area and a hundred foot buffer to a coastal bank. Who's here for this project?
Hello. Hi. My name is Sarah Ray. I'm an environmental specialist at Massport. I'm joined by Madeline Sewell, the environmental manager at the Capital Programs and Environmental Affairs Division of Massport, and Chat Myers, the Assistant Director of Maritime for Capital Programs at Massport.
Okay, go right ahead.
Thank you. So we are here on behalf of Massachusetts Port Authority for our filing to request an amendment to an ongoing maintenance notice of intent, the Pierce Park Sinkhole Repairs. Next slide. So the driver for this particular request is back in the spring. An area of settlement was developing along the expansion joint in the deck area of the park near the Sailing Center, as you can see in this photo, causing a potential trip hazard for the visitors. So it was found an amendment would need to be made in order to incorporate this type of repair to the preexisting NOI. And we would be carrying this out in the fall if it's approved, when there's less visitors in the park. Next slide. So just for some background, sinkholes were developing at the park originally. So just for some background, um, sinkholes were developing at the park originally, uh, did not have a maintenance NOI. And so emergency filings were made on about five separate occasions just to ensure the safety of the public and continued access to the park. Ocean interference will continue to break down the interior components of the pier, so that drives necessary repairs from time to time. And in twenty nineteen, a maintenance NOI was filed to allow Massport to act more quickly to fix these developing sinkholes. So, um, an extension to the order of conditions was issued in twenty twenty-two and is set to expire July eighteenth, twenty twenty-six, which is a pretty substantial time from now. So Massport feels the reason to amend the current NOI. And this amendment is needed just because the method of repair is different from the initially sanctioned maintenance. Next slide, please. So this is the original area that was included, uh, as you can see, it's specifically designated for the pier area of the park. Next slide, please. And the current settlement issue is in the red on this aerial image. So that's the deck portion of the park and with this request, we would like to have the order of conditions extend from the pier to incorporate the deck and upland areas of the property in the event that other areas have similar sinkhole or settling issues. Next slide, please. So this is a cross-section of the initial repair accounted for in the maintenance NOI. The pier is supported by piles and is protected on the exterior by granite blocks. The surface is, uh, brick pavers followed by a sandy fill that supports the piles. And so as the granite blocks are not fully watertight, waves wash past the exterior, which degrades the internal fill and causes the surface to sink. So the repair in this case is to remove the pavers, excavate the sinkhole area, um, insert a flowable fill, which is a lightweight concrete mixed with sand to restabilize the support, and then add a leveling top layer of sand and pavers back to the walkway. Next slide, please. And this is just a photo to show, um, the example of how the sinkhole looked in the pier area and the level of repairs required. Um, the sinkholes varied in repair size up to four hundred square feet. Next slide, please. So this cross-section represents the area in need of repair, the expansion joint. Unlike the pier, this portion of the park is not protected by granite blocks, but rather is just, um, precast concrete beams across piles with a slab of concrete across the beams. Um, the reason that an area of settlement is occurring here is just caused by corrosion from salt air in the concrete slab rather than from wave action. So the repair process involves, first of all, cordoning off the area, um, putting up a straw waddle along the water side of the deck, you know, no stockpiling of materials, um, and then just removing the, the three inch brick pavers, removing the corroded slab, which varies in depth from about six to twelve inches, recasting it and then covering it back up with the pavers. So as a result, this process doesn't involve any excavation or addition of any amount of soil. And to- the total depth of the repair would be about a foot to a foot and a half. And nothing below the concrete slab would have any repairs done to it. Uh, a drain that runs through the deck beams will be plugged before the slab is replaced and will be removed upon completion of the repair. Um, next slide. And this is a map showing the wetland resource areas, um, as you can see, it's along the open waters and is reinforced with riprap along the park area, which is noted here as RS Rocky Intertidal Shore. Next slide, please. And then this is the format map provided by FEMA, it just shows the land subject to coastal storm flowage. And next slide, please. So with that, um, thank you for your time and if there are any questions in regard to this request, we'll take them now.
Okay, uh, Eleanor, do you have anything for us on this one?
We don't have anything to add on this, thanks.
Okay, before I go to the commissioners, as a reminder to members of the public to provide public comment, please, whoa, I just lost it. Uh, please raise your virtual hand or type in the chat via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in by phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself or send your questions to staff via email at cc@boston.gov. I'll just comment that if the commission is minimal to this request, uh, for an amendment, I'd suggest adding the same kind of language we've added it, uh, in an earlier filing today, which is just asking the uh, applicant to provide forty-eight hours' notice with the type and extent of work, I think that way, uh, we'll just be able to track more what's happening. So Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, that, that addition to the amendment makes perfect sense, um, yeah, I don't have any further questions. I just, I guess, one, one question I might have is that, whether in the same way that for the um, Boston Harbor folks, whether that we have some sort of size or whatever cap that, you know, so that this doesn't run away from us, but maybe that can just be taken care of administratively as well.
Commissioner, what, uh, what do you mean by cap?
Oh, sorry, just in terms of like, you know, the, whatever, that the filling is not like, you know, full pavement depth, full width of pier or, you know, that there's some sort of like, you know, less than a truck full of materials coming in or something like that, you know?
Right, right, the, the current NOI is, uh, or order of conditions, as, uh, Ms. Ray pointed out, um, is limited to four hundred square feet approximately.
Oh, okay, cool, sorry, I missed that.
We would not, we would not take it upon ourselves to address something so enormous, uh, without, without coming to the commission, absolutely.
Sounds good, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Condon?
Thank you, maybe that last point clarified one of my questions as well, but I'll ask again just for the record. So what was the point of mentioning upland and other areas if that's not all part of, uh, the request here, or is it?
So due to the construction of the, uh, other areas, so, um, so there's, there's the two main areas, there's the filled pier, uh, and mostly what we're finding is sinkholes developing near the edge. Um, and, uh, in that case, you know, they, they're never that big, but what happens is there's sort of a rigid surface and so the material underneath it sort of slowly winnows away over time and then all of a sudden we find the sinkhole in it and it could have a significant impact to the public, which is one of the reasons why we filed emergency, uh, notices in the past. Uh, in this particular area, the pile-supported section of the deck, um, doesn't just cover the, uh, brick area, but it actually covers some, uh, vegetated area that's further inland. Uh, so it is possible that these could develop slightly inland of the, of the, um, of the, uh, the brick area, and then there's also another gravity wall, uh, behind the pile-supported area where we could theoretically develop sinkholes similar to the filled area that's also a little further up. We, we haven't had that happen, um, and, uh, we don't know whether something like that could happen. Uh, again, if something like that does happen, it's likely we'll find it fairly quickly and it won't be particularly large, we would expect it would fall under the size criteria that we've previously established and of course, every time an event like this happens, we reach out to the commission, uh, to make sure that we have all of the required information in place before we start any construction, so if it, if it were to, um, you know, reach a point where the commission was concerned, we could obviously come back, uh, and, and file separately or, or amend or, or what have you.
Mm-hmm, thank you, but for the current one though, do you, do you feel you're confident of the scope of the issue?
Yes, absolutely, yes. We can see most of it from the surface. And, uh, we had a contractor go underneath just to make absolutely sure that there was nothing observable from underneath, they didn't see anything, uh, we expect this all to be, uh, enclosed within the precast uh, deck members, uh, and the only exposure to the environment is the drain at the bottom of this precast trench that, uh, we will, uh, close off during construction, as Ms. Ray noted.
Okay. And did I hear salt air as the cause of the corrosion, is that what I heard?
Well, we suspect, I mean, it's possible that there could be, uh, salting from the surface because it is a walking surface, uh, so probably it's, it's also treated, uh, with salt during the winter, um.
Hmm.
But it, it appears, we, we, at this point, we don't expect a lot of that, that slab at the surface to have been impacted, um. Probably just, you know, within a foot of the actual expansion joint, uh, so we don't, we don't expect to have to remove a lot. Uh, but that's, that would be our assumption, is that, uh, saline conditions nearby the harbor or placement of salt, uh, during winter conditions could have resulted in, uh, degradation of the concrete.
Is there any interest in? Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I just, I just wanted to point out the park is about thirty years old at this point.
Right, right, is there any interest in finding out the exact cost?
Well, we'll probably know more once we open it up, um, and get a better sense for exactly, you know, what it looks like, uh, once we pull up the pavers, but we didn't want to do anything like that until after we talked to the commission.
Of course, I mean, when you do find out, it would be great for us to learn because, you know, this sort of thing is likely to happen again and we know the cost, then we can be more proactive about what's done. Um, and, um, I think there was, yeah, so one of the other reasons for this amendment is that the method used for repair has changed, is this like a new method because of the type of sinkhole it is, or it's a new method because there are new methods available and you want to be able to use more effective methods?
It's just a slightly different method because the, uh, design of this area is slightly different from the design of the area that we originally filed the notice of intent under. So as opposed to this being constructed as a filled area with soil, uh, this particular area is really mostly made from concrete.
I see. Uh, last question, maybe a quick one, is what, what is a, what is flowable fill again?
So flowable fill is a little bit like concrete, um, but it has a bit of a higher water content and a slightly different matrix. And the reason it's called flowable is that, um, it flows more like a liquid than concrete does. That can be important, uh, like for example, with the sinkholes, it can be important because it, it fills, it fills irregular areas more easily than concrete would. Um, and it's excavatable at a later date if need be, so rather than just have a solid hard plug of concrete, you have something that you can theoretically excavate in the future, although it depends on the mix, sometimes it's hard to excavate as well. But, uh, but the idea is that particularly with sinkholes, it works very well because, um, it, it will, it will fill up to the surface very easily and you know that the areas underneath have, uh, have been filled as well, because it's more liquid, it's just, it flows, yeah.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you. Thank you, Sir Herbst.
Uh, Commissioner Linay?
Um, no more questions.
Commissioner Richmond?
I don't have any questions either, thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, did we have anybody wishing to speak, Eleanor?
Sorry, I am not seeing any raised hands and nothing in the inbox either.
Okay, thank you, so at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the request, uh, for amended order of conditions with a new special condition requiring forty-eight hours' notice of the type and extent of work that's about to be done.
So moved.
Is there, is there a second? Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Linay?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that passes five to nothing, uh, thank you. Um, so there've been a number of continuances, so continued is, uh, notice of intent for DEP, DEP file number zero zero six seventeen seventy-two and Boston file number twenty-one, twenty twenty-one oh one oh, uh, for DeCoulis and Company on behalf of Stephco Holdings, uh, continued also as a notice of intent for DEP file number zero zero six nineteen sixty-one and Boston file number twenty twenty-three oh five one from Conoco Engineers and Scientists on half, on behalf of the Mass DCR for Napanzit River Reservation work. Also continued as a notice of intent for DEP file number zero zero six nineteen ninety-six and Boston file number twenty twenty-four oh two one from Epsilon Associates on behalf of the Water and Sewer Commission for construction of the North Austin Storm Drain Extension. Uh, the commission will now begin its regular meeting, uh, the next item on the agenda is a request for a certificate of compliance, but Eleanor, did you say this one isn't ready for prime time?
We have not received an update from the applicant, so we would recommend that the commission hold off on a vote for this project.
We will skip that, uh, do we have any administrative updates?
Nothing in particular, other than, um, welcoming and also thanking Commissioner Linay for joining her first hearing as a commissioner.
Woo-hoo, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Linay. Um, and I think I'm gonna skip the acceptance of meeting minutes because I know Chair Parker generally takes a look at those, so at this point, uh, we could adjourn by acclamation, I think that's our usual rule.
That's good.
All good?
Have a good night.
Everybody, thank you.
All right, thanks all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You.